Good evening, everyone. Today is May 12, 2017. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Education. We just walked out of executive session. We will be returning after the meeting, so we won't be convening the meeting in public. As every meeting, before we start the public meeting, we'd like to stand and recognize America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So as we do at every public meeting, we'll start out with comments by board members. I will pass it to my extreme left, Dodge.
Hello, everyone. Just a big thank you to the PTA for Field Day. I took part in it as a volunteer, and it was great to see all the kids' faces and a lot of hustling around with the administration and all the volunteers. And a big thank you to the PTA for that. It was a great time.
Thanks, Rob. Michelle?
Sure. I just also want to, again, congratulate all the students that were just recognized at the Board recognition, and also to all the students this time of year now. We're coming to the end, and there's so many academic awards ceremonies, National Honor Society, athletic awards ceremonies, and also to all the students who really are just doing their personal best and maybe overcoming their own personal challenges. Congratulations to everyone. I think that was probably one of the best awards recognitions we've had, and I don't think it's by accident. I want to thank the community for supporting our budget, because when you support our budget, we're able to support what you saw tonight. It's not by accident that there are so many more students involved in the arts and receiving recognition, because when you invest in something, it comes back to you in tenfold, and it's we're giving these children an opportunity. And really, that comes from the community first for supporting our budgets, and then from our administrators for making the recommendations they do. So a real big thank you to everybody for the success that we're seeing. And I did also want to take a minute to thank Steve, who was recognized just a few moments ago for his service on the Board. First of all, to thank his family, because time here is time away from his family, so thank you to the Pugnata family. And Steve actually was active advocating before he was on the Board, and I met him years ago before he served. He was actively at the microphone at Board meetings advocating for what he thought was best for students and for our district. And I don't think he's the kind of guy who's going to go away.
No.
So we will see you again, I am sure, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Rob?
Thanks, Steve. I echo the sentiments of my fellow Board members. A great achievement by the children in our district. I've had the opportunity to attend a few of the awards ceremony, the ceremony this evening. It's great to be a part of it and to shake each child's hand for the hard work that they put in, and now to see them rewarded is fantastic. I think it speaks to what we're doing now with the school, our curriculum improvement, the dedication from the teachers. So as my fellow Board member stated, just congratulations to all the children, the parents who should be proud of them. They work hard, and it's nice for them to be recognized for the hard work. Just a couple of quick updates in regards to the upcoming schedule. In the middle school, we have final exams this week, so good luck to our students in regards to the exams. Next week, we have the eighth grade dinner on the 16th, it's a Friday, and we also have the middle school dance is on the 16th, and then their graduation ceremony is on the 21st. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Cynthia?
I guess I would like to say a little bit of the same. Congratulations to all the students out there. I think it was amazing to see all the smiles on their face. I think that's what I think brings joy, I mean, to us and also to their parents. They should be very proud of themselves, and their parents should be proud of them as well. I know I was at one not that long ago, and I don't remember seeing so many kids up here, so it was great to see such an increase in the amount of kids that were up here. I don't know if Rob mentioned, but there's also for fifth grade, some upcoming things in regards to, they have, I believe, their luau?
Yes.
Is that correct? So their luau is also coming up this week. They have a lot of graduations coming, both fifth and eighth, on the same day, Wednesday, and they both are being followed with parties as well. So I guess just keep that on your calendar, and for all you students out there, keep studying, study hard, and good luck on all your exams.
Thanks, Cynthia. So this will be my last public comment. The first thing I wanted to do is I did attend the awards for the Tuckahoe High School, and congratulations to all the individuals that were recognized. You made our community extremely proud for all your efforts, so I thank you guys for working so hard on your studies and being recognized by your teachers. The other thing, I did have the privilege of attending the National Junior Honor Society function, and that's always a special evening, and if you've never gone to one, please go and applaud these children. They work so hard, and their dedication and their service to the community to get on the National Junior Honor Society is something that's very special, so congratulations to all those children. So I just ask you to bear with me. It's with great sadness that June 30th will be my last official Board meeting in my three year term. I decided to do this three years ago to serve this community, serve the kids, and really went in it with zero agenda, other than trying to help the public and the community. It's something I always felt was important in life, is to dedicate and donate your time in any which way. And if there's one thing I can give everybody who's watching, advice, if you can volunteer to do something that helps your community do it, because the rewards of it are quite fulfilling for yourself and for your community. Public perception of a school board, I don't think, is fully understood, and I do want to recognize that the Board spends a tremendous amount of time commitment to serve the school. A lot of people know it's not a paid job. And promotions at work and busy schedules and running to baseball games for your kids and everything else that goes along with being on a Board always comes second, because you're committing yourself to a Board. And sometimes Boards are faced with difficult decisions, and it's hard to do, because there's always two sides to almost every story. And inevitably, when you're on a Board and you make a decision, there's always a group of individuals that may not be happy with the decision that you made. But understand that the individuals that are sitting in front of you here today and the ones that I've worked with in the past always have information that's not always privy to the public, and sometimes could be quite frustrating to sit on a Board and not be able to explain why you make decisions. But know that the people that have served this community and served Tuckahoe schools always have your kids at best interest. It's, a lot of people will tell you that being on a school Board is a thankless job. I know we've all heard that, but it's amazing that you hear those comments when people are thanking you. And I can't tell you how many people in this community have thanked me over the past three years for serving, and every time they would thank me, it was moving, because it was nice to know that people recognized the efforts that folks like myself and the rest of my fellow Board members do. This is a wonderful school district, and if there's one thing I can ask the community to do for me after serving you for three years, is approve the bond that's going to be proposed next year. It's important that we invest in our schools, because if we invest in our schools, we invest in our children, and we invest in our community. Debates often occur on cost of the projects and where, why are we spending money on certain things? Is it ultimately necessary? Just understand that the debates that happen with the Board on making those types of decisions are made not only with children in mind. I think it's important to understand that this is a school that serves a community. And often, things I heard about the bond was, you know, are we doing things for the community or the students, and why would we spend money on a bond if it benefited the community? Just understand that the community is the one paying the taxes, not just the parents of the schoolchildren, so they should have a voice in any decision that we make as well. And those voices should be heard when it comes time to vote for a bond. But I do ask you that, understand that whatever bond is proposed by this current Board will be the right bond, and I beg you to approve it when it comes time to vote. I just wanted to spend a couple of seconds just thanking a few individuals. First of all, the community. As Michelle said, I ran three years ago. Eight years ago, when I moved to Tuckahoe, I didn't even know what a school Board was as the result of private education, and I remember a neighbor telling me to go to a school Board meeting and instantly being involved, as Michelle said. I used to sit next to Michelle at those meetings before either one of us were on the Board, and I was humbled by the trust that the community invested in me to serve on this Board three years ago, and it's something I'll never forget. I always joke around and say, I think 300 or 280 people voted for me or something, and I don't even know who most of them are, so thank you for giving me that trust. And thank you for always making me feel welcome and appreciated. And part of that community are the volunteers that volunteered to this school, the Tuckahoe School Foundation, the PTA, all the volunteers for various projects that occur within our community outreach. A school like this can't run without the parents that are involved and the community that's involved, that volunteers their time selfishly in order to make it a great environment for our kids. I wanted to thank all the employees of the district, everybody who gets a paycheck from the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. You're what our children look to. You're the face of the school, and remember that every single day. Even if you're having a bad day, you can't have a bad day in front of a child, you know, whether you're welcoming at the door with a smile or coming to sporting events, theatrical shows late at night. I see you there, and I notice you there, and believe me, I appreciate it, because your love for our children, to me, is never unnoticed. The families of our employees, thank you for understanding the early mornings and the late PMs. I don't speak to many of them. I know I spoke to Carl's wife a couple of times when it was 10:30 at night, and he was still here. And believe me, we as a Board appreciate the sacrifices that they make. I also wanted to thank the Board members that I've served with, Julio, Kathy, Mike, Henry, Dodge, Rob, Danielle, and Michelle, and now Cynthia. You know, the nights that we've spent together, we may not have always agreed on things, but I know your heart was always in the right place, and you made this a fulfilling time for me, and I really will always value my friendships with you now and forever. I do wish good luck to Peter and Kathy as you serve this community. I think you'll find the next three years rewarding. And lastly, Lauren, thank you for all you do. Anytime we ask Lauren to do something, it's always greeted with a smile on her face, and not many people know Lauren behind the scenes, but as a Board, it was quite nice to be able to work with you every day. Carl, I think it's the best decision I ever made in my Board of three years to have you lead this school district. Your first year, you handled it with dignity and grace, with almost an entire new whole administrative team that was set up, that you had to lead, as well as kind of learning on your feet with the job. I can tell you, behind closed doors and speaking with Carl, he never has an agenda but to provide the needs and wants for our kids in this community. So, you know, superintendents are not plentiful in Westchester County, and knowing that our district has somebody like Carl for the foreseeable future puts a high advantage over neighboring districts that, right now, are faced with situations where they don't have somebody that they can trust. So I thank you for making this your home, and I look forward to coming back one day when we're celebrating your accomplishments at your retirement and the community comes in support of you. And lastly, my family, Michelle Nicholas Haley, you guys sacrificed a lot for me to serve. I've missed anniversaries dinners, I've missed birthdays, I've missed shows, I've missed sporting events, and it's sad every time that happens, but they were always supportive and always understanding, and I never got the shrug of shoulders or the dirty look when I couldn't come to their theatrical performance because we had a Board meeting. And all I would say is that my life wouldn't be complete without them, and I'm looking forward to hopefully being able to make more of those events now that my commitment here is done. And thank you, everybody, and I'm sorry for taking up so much time.
Okay. Carl, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay. Well, leave it to Steve to thank everybody and recognize everyone, and Steve, thank you for those generous and sincere comments. But I said earlier, you know, Steve has been an outstanding Board member. This last year, he stepped up as Board President, and his leadership was invaluable, particularly to me as a first-year superintendent. He always offered a balanced perspective, always helped me get to the right decisions by talking about what's best for our kids and the community in general. He is a decent human being. He is smart, he has integrity in everything that he does, and I will miss him personally. But I know, as Michelle said earlier, he's not going to go far. Steve has community service in his heart. With all his leadership skills, I've said this before, it's not a surprise that Steve has done well in his own career. This, of course, has been his service to our community, and I'm sure he's going to continue to serve and find different ways to serve. I am happy, he has a beautiful family, and I am happy that he will have a bit more time to enjoy his wife, Michelle, and his two beautiful children. So Steve, just again, I wish you the best, and it's not a goodbye, because we will be seeing you here at the schools quite often, I'm sure.
Thanks, Carl.
Additionally, I just want to say, we have a lot of exciting events coming up and culminating events for the school year. We look forward to seeing our parents at the graduations and the few remaining awards ceremony. This evening's ceremony was fantastic. I think we had more students than ever. Our kids are just doing great things, whether it's in academics, science, math, sports, you name it, literature, writing. It's just so impressive, the range of accomplishments. Good news, there have been a number of fifth-grade parents. We have our largest class in the district in grade five. I believe it's 114 students, and a few parents have appealed to the principal in May about potentially moving the ceremony here to the middle-high school auditorium. Well, that has been made official. A blackboard connect will go out tomorrow. We will be able to accommodate more family members. It's not that it's unlimited, but it's at least 30 or 40 percent bigger. It's comfortably air-conditioned, so again, the Cottle Fifth Grade Moving Up Ceremony, which is scheduled for a week from Wednesday, excuse me, will be here at the middle-high school auditorium. Also, I just want to mention, we did earlier bring up three outstanding teachers who are all being recommended for tenure to the Board this evening. I think it's important for the community to know that we have a very rigorous APPR process, where teachers are observed by several different administrators. There is ongoing visits to their classroom, their participation at meetings, and their work during curriculum projects and after-school is all taken into consideration. The three people, Liz Doherty at Cottle, Kate Rogan at the middle school, and Maria Valenti, have just done an outstanding job. I've observed each one several times, had the pleasure of working and seeing firsthand the great work that they do, but there is a high bar. Not everyone gets tenure in Tuckahoe, but these three people certainly deserve it, and just a big congratulations to them again, pending the Board's approval, of course. Lastly, I need to mention that one of our beloved teachers and staff members, Ann Palmieri, passed away recently. Ann was in our district for many years. She started her career down at Cottle as a classroom teacher. She worked at the middle school when I was middle school principal. She came up to teach English. That's when I really got to know Ann, and I got to say, she was an amazing person, generous, kind, loving of every one of the Tuckahoe students. No matter what the skill set of our children, she made sure everybody was successful in her classroom. This is a giving, amazing person, and I know I speak on behalf of every administrator and every teacher, that our condolences to Ann's family. She was a wonderful person. I know there is a memorial service for her this Saturday, and many people from this district will attend, and I personally just need to say, Ann will be sincerely missed by all of us. And I'd like to ask if the Board could do a moment of silence? Maybe we could stand and just, in memory of Ann, do a brief moment of silence?
Thank you. Thanks, Carl. Lee?
Thank you. At this time of the year, we're getting ready to close our books in the business office. We're preparing for all the events for the end of the year with our facilities, and we're also getting ready to do a lot of work over the summer to prepare our schools again for September opening. So we're getting maintenance projects, we're purchasing all the books and supplies that the teachers need, and we're getting ready for our summer audit. So it's our busy time of year, and we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. I'm going to start off next with the comments from the PTA and Tuckahoe School Foundation. So Allison, from the PTA.
Hello. Welcome, Cynthia, to the Board. This past month, the PTA sponsored a trip for our senior students to the 9/11 Memorial Museum. The PTA recognition night was last Wednesday. Thank you to those of you who joined us. Cottle Field Day was last Friday. We had a high school PPLT meeting, which was very informative and productive. We have selected our six scholarship recipients, whose names will be announced at the senior award ceremony. Looking ahead, we have our refreshments to celebrate the graduations of the kindergarten, fifth grade, eighth grade, and seniors. In the fall, we will be starting after-school enrichment programs at Cottle and the middle school, so please keep an eye out for more information on that. Lastly, we would like to thank the school Board for all of the support you've given us this year. Stephen, thank you so much for serving our community, not only for the time you were the Board trustee and president, but also for the countless times you stood at this podium as a community member trying to make effective change. Your commitment to our school district is quite apparent, and we wish you all the best in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Regina, Tuckahoe School Foundation?
Hello. I wanted to let you know, the Family Fun Night that TSF had two weeks ago, it was cold, but Cottle families came. I'm glad everyone came. They had a very fun time, and it is a big school district. There's a lot of children. All the families came. We barbecued, had reptiles at Cottle, we had a petting zoo, we had a magician, a DJ, and I think all the children had fun, all the parents enjoyed it, so I want to thank all of them. Thank you to all the families that came. After that, we also sold magnets for all three schools, the graduation signs and socks. I want to let you know, they are all on sale throughout the year. Graduation signs, a few more weeks, and after that, the magnets and socks are year-round. We're also looking for new members. If anyone wants to join, please send an email to tuckahoeschoolfoundation.com. And we are planning the casino night. That's all that's going on now. Thank you to the new members. Thank you, Steve, for everything you've done here.
Thank you, Regina. And please, volunteer for the PTA and the TSF. They do such a wonderful job for our kids and for this community, so thank you both. This is our first recognition of audience. As a reminder, this is just for items that are on the agenda. If anybody would like to come up and speak, please do so now. Okay, I thought that was a later round. All right, we'll go to the next agenda item, which is all business of the Board. I don't know if there's any facilities update. I don't believe so. Is there?
The only thing I will say, and Lee, feel free to jump in here, but Lee-Lu has been hard at work. The timing couldn't have been better with this terrible heat that we're living through in this past couple of days. We've installed some extra air conditioning units, replaced some old ones. I know her custodial staff has replaced many filters, and we do have a number of in-house projects planned for the summer. We're splitting up one classroom to make it appropriate for two smaller specialized classes. We have some more brick pointing, I believe, and some other summer projects. We are hiring some of our high school students to work alongside the custodial staff, as we've done in the past, and I look forward to getting some good things done. Steve mentioned earlier in his opening comments about the Capitol Project. Right now, with two new Board members, one here this evening, Cynthia, and one entering in July, I think we're going to take advantage of the summer months to really bring the two new Board members up to speed. I know they followed the plans closely. That showed in their comments, but we would like to have them connected with our architects and our sitting Board members and bring them up to speed, so we, together, can make a decision that hopefully is in place by the end of this summer and then will be out for a public vote in the fall, as we plan. So I am optimistic. A lot of work has gone into this planning, and as soon as our new Board members are brought up to speed, I think we'll be prepared to move forward. So stay tuned for that.
Great. Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Carl. Just on the Capitol Project, I think I just want to thank everybody in the community who came out to vote. I know that there was a lot of discussion about it, there's a lot of concerns about the direction that we're headed on that project. I will tell you that my opinion is it's clear. I've heard the community speak. I understand how the community feels, so I think we have definitely some work to do with the new Board members to get them up to speed, but I think it's pretty clear that with the House not coming through, where the community stands. So I think from my perspective, I'm looking to move forward primarily with Proposition One and the standalone gym. For those that are wondering, because I think people are unsure where I stood on it, I am no longer going to push for that proposition to be part of it, for the community to decide. It was clear how you voted on the House, how you feel, so for what that's worth, going into the summer, for those who'd like to think about it, that's my position there. So I recommend that maybe the Facility Committee meets again to discuss it, and we try to finalize that plan by the end of the summer, as Carl stated.
Any other comments? Okay, great. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda, a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2 through 16. Do you have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And I'll kind of, two of them, I think, are together. For Item 4, which was, increase in allowance, and on Item 6, the incentive for discovery additional services. I just noticed that those, it looks like we have additional services here for the end of the school year. Is that something that changed, that led to that changing? Because I know we budget, kind of, at the beginning and throughout the year, we're approving services that we're going to be paying for, and I see that these two came on here at the end, so I was just curious, did something change during the year that led to these additional expenses?
Sure, Rob. Let me take the first one that you had a question about, which is increase in allowance. We have a psychologist who we've been using, and she does great work, Dr. Ben Strober, who has done work for us over the course of the school year. A lot of our psychoevals for special education have to occur towards the end of the year. It's annual review time. Also this year, we've brought in a number of new tuition students. When we provide evaluations for them, by the way, we charge back their home district, so the expense is not completely Tuckahoe's. However, to be clear, Dr. Strober will be doing some evals for Tuckahoe students. The special education system works where every three years we are required to do a psychological and educational eval for every child with an IEP. That cycle, sometimes, there are years that, as you would imagine, it's not a perfect 33 percent every year. There may be a year where there are more evals, and this seems to be one of those years. We've had a few students move in, so our psychologist, and we do have three, two down at Cottle, one at the middle-high school, simply cannot finish the workload. These evals are time-sensitive. Dr. McDonald has brought this recommendation to us, asking for an increase, so the psychologist can assist, our three psychologists, and provide some additional evals. Some of the expense, again, will be billed back to the home districts. Now, I believe Number 6, Rob, was the other one?
Sent it for discovery, additional services.
Okay. Let me see if I can pull that up. Dr. McDonald is at her children's. Okay, I believe this organization is working with our children over the summer, as well as now. I must say, now that I step back from special education, I am not as familiar with it as I used to be. I would be able to answer this off the top of my head, but I believe they are working with our self-contained special education classes, and it's a recommendation from Dr. McDonald. If you'd like to hold off on approving it to get a little more detailed information from her, she simply could not be here today, but it is a special education service that I would assume is required by an IEP. It would not be recommended unless we had a legal responsibility to provide this service.
And that's something that would evolve throughout the course of the year, so you wouldn't know that coming into the end of the year here, where you'd have to add the services?
Exactly. Special education is sometimes difficult to predict. We have students that move in mid-year if you move in with an IEP. Again, we've taken in some tuition students, sometimes mid-year. We try our best to project at the beginning of the year, but sometimes those projections are off, and, you know, it only would take two or three students that need a particular service for us to have to come back to the Board to increase. So I'm very confident in Dr. McDonald and her recommendation, but further detail, I would need to have her provide that to the Board.
If I could just add to that, just a little history, especially for Number 4, where, oh, I'm sorry, for Number 4, where Dr. McDonald is asking for additional, to increase the budget that was initially set for that, and it's really nice to see that the checks and balances are working, because we didn't want to have open-ended agreements, not specifying how much was being asked for, and that this way, if we exceed it, then they would have to come back to the Board. And that this way, if we exceed it, then they would have to come back to the board and ask for the additional funding. I will say, it's very rare to see that. So, you know, it's nice to know that the estimates that are being given are accurate, and when it happens, and especially when it's in the need for special education. But just a little background there, they were put in place to, specifically so that they were not open-ended agreements. So I just, I think it's nice to see that it's working, and that when they have to come back, the board does get a chance to see what's going on there.
Okay. Couple other real quick ones. Number seven, intermunicipal agreement? Street paving or street resurfacing? Do we know what?
We enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester each year, with the village of Eastchester, the town of Eastchester, the Bronxville Schools and the Eastchester Schools. The town gets together a consortium that way and bids out asphalt and concrete paving. We're not obligated to do anything. This is only if we choose to use the town to do any of these services. We have the benefit of the large group bid, and we get better prices that way.
Are we planning to
At the moment, we're not. We may at some point look into, if we need to, on a parking lot or something on our own property, we can take advantage of their pricing.
Thank you. Last one. The transportation contract. I see, I understand that we have the bids, and it all seemed to go through fine. I guess what jumped out at me is it was an 18% savings. So I was curious, are, does any of the services diminished, or have they been abbreviated? I mean, that's a significant savings.
It is. Last year, when they went out to bid, it was at the last moment when the contractor decided not to renew the contract. So we were not a benefit of a very good price at the time in comparison to how we did this year. This year, seven companies bid, and we thought that the bids came in very well. There are no changes in services. It's just that we feel we'll make some savings this year because of the competition.
Thank you.
And Rob, in reading a little further into the dense contractual language, the Center for Discovery is, in fact, what I talked about earlier. It's a student, I remember the case, it's a student who registered after the school year already had started, was placed out of district, has very specific needs. And this contract, his IEP requires him to have a 1-2-1-8. So this is that contract. The placement actually was slow. They've accepted him, and he's been there for several months. They were slow in getting us the contract, but that's what it is, and it's, of course, required by an IEP.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so just as a reminder, this is a motion to approve consent agenda 2 through 16. We've just been discussing it, so now all in favor?
Pose.
Thank you. Number two is to approve minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 16, 2017. Do you have a motion? Dodge, second. This is hard, because I got to look back and forth. I feel like I've been -- Rob, discussion? All in favor? Onto the business of the board. Number one, appropriate fund balance resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District retain $1,316,000 of the 2016-17 year-end fund balance as unappropriated fund balance for 2017-18. Appropriate $969,820 for the 2016-17 year-end fund balance to reduce taxes in the 2017-18 budget, and use any remaining funds to increase the district-approved reserves. Do you have a motion? Dodge, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Number two, establish a retirement contribution reserve fund. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the establishment of a retirement contribution reserve fund pursuant to Section 6-R of the General Municipal Law for the payment of all or any portion of the required annual contributions to the New York State and local employees' retirement system pursuant to Section 17 of the Retirement and Social Security Law. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby authorizes the deposit of $50,000 into the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund from available financial resources. And be it further resolved that the Director of Finance and Facilities is hereby directed to deposit, secure, and invest the sums in the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund in the manner provided by Sections 10 and 11 of the General Municipal Law, Sections 3651 parentheses 2, and the 3652 of the Education Law and the Investment Policy of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. And any interests earned and capital gains realized on the sums as so deposited or invested shall accrue to and become part of the reserve fund. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, thank you. Second. Dodge, discussion?
Yes, if I may.
Sure.
I think, if I recall, we had a discussion when our accountants were in, and he brought up the possibility that in the next year or so, we may see something change, be it market-wise. And it was recommended to create this reserve. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. And we talked about it with the Finance Committee as well. This is a reserve that we're allowed to create by the state. We've never had it at the district before. The board has to establish it if we do want to use it. This is only for the employees' retirement system, not the teachers' retirement system. There's no reserves allowed for that at the moment. But this allows us, if we do have some surplus funds, to put them into that reserve. And in years where the fund might not perform as well, and the rates might go up, it allows us to use these reserves and smooth over those kind of spikes in the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Pose. Number three, accept a donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the Tuckahoe Athletic Scholarship in memory of Augie Nardone at Tuckahoe High School, and whereas the district would like to accept such a donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the Eastchester Eagle Sports Club in the amount of $1,000. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? Thank you to the Eastchester Eagle Sports Club for remembering the memory of Augie Nardone. Very nice. Anybody else? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Number four, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Hart Song Inc. for creative arts and therapies for period of July 3, 2017, through August 11, 2017, at a rate of $120 per 45-minute session, not to exceed $1,500 in the 15-16 year. This was not applicable. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Okay. Personnel. Confer tenure. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confer tenure upon Elizabeth Doherty in the special education tenure area effective September 1, 2017. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? For those watching on TV, we're about to do a couple of tenures. We honored them during the board recognition night, so we will reserve our comments. Congratulations to all of them. Anybody else? All in favor? Congratulations, Elizabeth. Number two, confer tenure. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confer tenure upon Kate Rogan in the English tenure area effective September 1, 2017. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Pose. And congratulations to Kate. Number three, confirm tenure. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confirm tenure on Maria Valente in the ESL tenure area effective September 1, 2017. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Maria. And accept a retirement. Resolve to accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Robert Nguyen effective June 30, 2017. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? Best of luck to Robert and his retirement. Enjoy your time off. All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Number five, appoint stipends. Resolve to appoint the following stipends for the 2017-18 school year. Rick Martin, district webmaster, $2,834. Rick Martin, Tuckahoe High School webmaster, $1,417. Rick Martin, Tuckahoe Middle School webmaster, $1,417. Rick Martin, Cottle webmaster, $1,417. Doreen Pinto, athletic secretary, $4,274. Lauren Zagorski Truel, communications coordinator, $8,000. David Benlin, JV boys soccer coach, $5,667. Michael McGurven, JV girls volleyball coach, $6,800. Adrian Taskin, modified boys soccer coach, $5,101. Thomas Cruz, modified girls soccer coach, $5,101. Joanne Ornstein, modified volleyball co-coach, $2,550.50. Angela Georgie, modified volleyball co-coach, $2,550.50. Ernest Morris, modified football coach, $6,234. And Gerald DeFabia, modified football coach, $6,234. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Need a second. Michelle, thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. It's really hard, because we're sitting next to each other. I can't see. Number six, approve an agreement. Whereas the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District seeks to extend the appointment of Mr. Carl Albano, Superintendent of Schools, for the school district, and approve an employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions under which Mr. Albano will continue to be employed now therefore. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Mr. Carl Albano to the position of Superintendent of Schools for three-year term to commence July 1, 2017, and ending on June 30, 2020. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves an employment agreement with Mr. Albano dated June 12, 2017, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment under which Mr. Albano will continue to serve as Superintendent of Schools during the aforementioned term, and hereby authorizes the President of the Board to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Carl. Approve an agreement? Almost read the wrong thing. Resolve to approve the terms and conditions of employment dated June 12, 2017, governing the employment of Lee Lu. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Michelle, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Lee. Approve an agreement. Resolve to approve the terms and conditions of employment dated June 12, 2017, governing the employment of Dr. Ellen McDonald. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Ellen. Resolve to approve the terms and conditions of employment dated June 12, 2017, governing the employment of Lauren Zagorski Truel. Do I have a motion? Rob, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Lauren. Approve summer scholars councilors. Resolve to appoint Adriana Kakucci, Christopher Picadio, Jessica Berger, Megan Lynn as student councilors for the summer schools, summer scholars program at a rate of $9.70 per hour, not to exceed $523.80 each, for the period of June 26, 2017, through July 27, 2017. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Cynthia, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations, Andre, Adriana, Christopher, and Jessica. And Megan, you're now employed. Number 11, ESI program. Resolve to approve the following individuals for the ESI program at the rate of $62 per hour, per the TTA contract for the period July 3, 2017, through August 25, 2017. Jill Quatotario, special education teacher. Elizabeth Doherty, special education teacher. Caitlin DeSimone, special education reading teacher. Benjamin Faber, special education teacher. And Jocelyn Tripodi, speech-language teacher. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Number 12, ESI program. Resolve to approve Jenna Mizillo as a special education teacher for the ESI verbal behavior program at the rate of 1/200 of her annual salary per day, as per the TTA MOA dated May 16, 2017, for a period of July 3, 2017, through August 11, 2017. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Cynthia? I saw the hand go slow. Discussion? All in favor? Pose. ESI program, number 13. Resolve to appoint the following individuals for the ESI program at the current hourly rates for the period of July 3, 2017, through August 11, 2017. Teacher assistant Nina Betapaglia, $21.94 per hour. And teacher A, Robert Lapori, $17.94. Do I have a motion? Michelle, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Congratulations. Approve student summer workers. Resolve to approve the following individuals as part-time student workers for up to four hours per day for the period July 5, 2017, through August 11, 2017, at a rate of $10 per hour. Chad Banks, Colin Cummings, Isaiah Green, Javon Cutrell, Sage Reichman, and John Reichel, Jr. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Rob, discussion? All in favor? Pose. Great, we have some more student employees. Good job, guys. And number 15, approve an additional day. Resolve to approve Deborah DeFrancesco for an additional 25 days of pay at 1/200 of her annual salary, not to exceed $18,000 for the 2017-2018 school year. Do I have a motion? Dodge, second. Michelle, discussion?
I mean, we know what it is, but maybe if Carl wants to
Carl, do you want to? Sure. This is something that we implemented this past year. Ms. DeFrancesco, over the summer, has been assisting with our families who have parentally placed their children in our programs earlier in the agenda. We've approved some summer programs for special education. So Ms. De is the person who's coordinating that placement for us, and has done a wonderful job as far as attracting, you know, new students to our program, reviewing their evaluations and their backgrounds to make sure they are a fit. As the board knows, our tuition revenues have increased. The district is not interested in making a profit, but the additional revenue does help us to offset some of the cost of special education programs here in Tuckahoe, and it enables us to provide our students with the very best in the way of quality, whether that be with our personnel, or equipment, or technology, whatever the kids may need. So this has been a positive. Ms. De works hard, and I think it is something that we'd like to recommend for the year ahead, and possibly into the future. Great. Any other questions? All in favor? Pose. Great. So I move to second recognition of the audience. If there's anything that wasn't on the agenda, or agenda items anybody would like to say? Great, so we're going to return it back to executive session as a tradition. So for you guys who aren't going to be here at your last meeting, we only use the gavel when it's somebody's last meeting. So this is not technically my last meeting potentially, but it's last public meeting, so I'll end the meeting here, and we'll go back to executive session. Thank you, everybody. Nicely.